I would like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board to order, and please note attendance Denise. Thank you for coming everyone, it's nice to see such a large crowd out there tonight. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one item on our consent agenda, is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Student reps, Acacia, I don't see Macy here tonight.
She's at golf districts.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so for baseball, the boys, the baseball boys are working hard while continuing to wrap up their season. They have three more games this season, all against Lebanon. There's a home game on the 13th and away game on the 14th and another home game on the 15th, which will be their last game. For softball, the softball girls only have three games left as well. They have a game on Tuesday at West Albany and then another one at Woodburn on Wednesday. The last game of the season is Friday against Lebanon and it is a home game. And track is just continuing to practice and preparing for their meets. They had districts last week in Woodburn and they did really well. Tennis, both the boys and girls tennis teams are continuing to practice and play matches. Boys golf is working hard on playing golf matches. Girls tennis or girls golf is at districts today and they're doing really well. So that's good. For clubs, ASB is working on planning the annual spirit games and talent show. The talent show will be on May 28th at the new high school and spirit games will be on May 30th at the old high school. And the juniors in ASB just got done with prom, we set it up and took down stuff. And key club is working on new service projects. FBLA is getting ready to go to districts in Nashville this year. I'm going and another girl, a freshman named Robin Traver is going and that will be like the end of June. Interact Club is working on service project and FFA has a plant sale going on right now and they're making a lot of money.
Okay, any questions?
What was the last baseball game?
The last one?
That you said the 14th?
Oh, yeah, their last game is this Friday.
It's the 16th.
Yeah, so it's the 16th and it's a home game.
And Acacia, spring week, is that the week of the, when you have the talent show and...
Yeah, so the talent show will be that Wednesday and it's, we're having an RIE schedule that day, so we have an hour for the talent show and then spirit games are on Friday.
Okay. Very good. Lots of things happening over there this time of year. Any other questions? Okay, thank you Acacia.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our first audience with visitors. I'd like to go over a couple guidelines real quick. When you come up, come up to this table and have a seat and please begin by stating your name and address and signing in. Denise will be on my case if you don't sign the paper. So it would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to no more than five minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving and you know, everybody can have a chance to speak. And the board won't take action on any non-agenda items presented this evening that you know, you guys bring ideas forward or something. We will, the board can refer those, refer some of those to the superintendent, discuss them at a later date or you know, something like that. So, given that, would anyone like to address the board tonight? Nobody? Okay. We'll move along. Pardon? Okay, come on up, come on up.
I've never had an issue with Ms. not having something to say. I'm Jessica Vee and I reside here in Silverton.
Jessica, could you pull the mic a little closer?
Oh, of course. I just wanted to say that with whatever decisions you make, you have a large amount of supporters this time. I feel like the momentum is different. I actually started the Facebook page myself and we have 228 followers, which I think is pretty significant for a town this size and given that it's only been there for a month. A lot of people in the community have commented on seeing us on the news, seeing us in our town, seeing the statesman's journals, reports. We plan to keep this momentum going. I would just encourage you to make a decision, to put a bond on a ballot this, this fall because with any news, even with good news, it dies down and it becomes old news. And I think that it would be really difficult to get this much energy and momentum if we wait a year or more. So that's all I wanted to say is that I think it would be really important to use what we have. And I've also heard, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard that on, like this year, it's different, the amount of voters you need to pass a bond than it is if you do it next year on a, does anybody else?
I don't know about that.
Is it, the, is it different on election years?
You're referring to the double majority requirement, which no, doesn't apply.
Okay.
That's very rare. That's not such a frequent occurrence anymore.
Okay.
Not for the general and primary and general elections.
Sure. That's all I wanted to say is that you're, you're gonna get support from us and if we have to go door to door, we'll do it. If you need help, let us know. I've got a lot of mama bears out there that'll help me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks Jessica.
Thank you Jessica, appreciate your involvement.
Yes, please.
Good evening, my name's Michael Gabe. I'm not used to coming and addressing the board.
Mr. Gabe, could you please sign?
Yes. I'm here because it's my understanding that the task force recommendation on the Eugene Fields School is on your agenda tonight. And I briefly had a few comments. I'm here for two reasons. One is I was involved with a small group of people that were campaigning for the bond issue last time. And I read a lot about what's involved with all of this and spent a lot of time on it and collected donations, donated myself. And I got cold out on South Water Street on first Friday, talking to people. And I was disappointed the bond didn't pass. And I understand some of the factors in that. I'm excited that the board and the administrations moved so rapidly on trying to find funding to move forward on this. I read the engineering report from the ZCS engineering evaluation. That, that was a sobering document and I probably don't need to teach to the choir on that, but it was sobering. I'm, I'm also a physician in town and I get anxious with that school and the, the construction, the walls, the report. The report just over and over again talked about what would happen in a code earthquake event, I think they called it. And that would be a devastating thing in our community. St. Mary's School, Malala School were warnings to us, the Oklahoma tornadoes. And I think that you've got a lot of support moving forward with this. I certainly hope and echo what the preceding speaker said, that we can have a lot more volunteers that are really actively involved in the small group we had before. I'd also like to mention, I hope we move quickly on this, as quickly as we can. And I think a simple solution that we can move forward on would be helpful, a good simple solution. There may be better ones that may involve shifting schools, but it would take longer, more expensive, I don't know if our community can afford it. And I would certainly be interested in a simple solution that moves forward as quickly as we can. And finally, we all speak for these little people that are in Eugene Field School. They'd be happy in any school we give them, but as a community, we need to give them a safe school. I think that's very important. And we're all very supportive of what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabe.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
My name is Courtney Good and I live in Scotts Mills.
And I'm Darcy Otter and I also live in Scotts Mills.
So I'm coming with a little bit of a different perspective on Eugene Field.
We can't hear you, can you?
Yes. So I recently sent the board an email with an alternate idea to look into regarding Eugene Field and I, if that's okay, I'd like to read that email. Okay, okay. Dear Silver Falls School District Board members, I spent the weekend watching and reading the last few board meetings and work sessions and I appreciate all the time and effort that is going into every detail. The general summary seems to be, close Eugene Field as soon as possible, but also to look into all of our options and have a plan before a new cost-effective bond is posted and our children are displaced. I also wrote in a few weeks ago outlining a plan that has not been proposed yet at any of these meetings. The plan included adding on to Robert Frost and moving the kindergarten through fifth graders to that location. Mark Twain could become a sixth through eighth grade junior high. During this process, rural schools would be addressed. Victor Pointe, Central Howell, Scotts Mills and Butte Creek are four schools that with the addition of a few rooms could comfortably house straight grades. After watching the board meetings and reading the recommendations from focus groups, which I was a part of, as well as the compiled community input that Mr. Belando presented, a plan like this makes sense. High concerns included, utilization of current buildings, details, safety, not enough space in some of the schools, long-term vision and high costs. It was also mentioned that Mark Twain, Robert Frost and Butte Creek could use seismic upgrades. Construction on each of these buildings could include these upgrades, making safety our top priority. This plan of course also raises some concerns. Boundary lines would have to be updated to move more children into some of the rural schools and I've realized that this is not a popular move. Also, this leaves the Schleter Street campus out of the picture altogether. On the other hand, all schools feed into Silverton High and straight grades would put outlying schools on more of a level playing field. Less children would be shifted around in the in-town schools and the question of having young children versus middle school kids so close to the high school would no longer be a concern. Not to mention the question concerning community roots. This would also eliminate an entire building and the costs associated with that and the savings would be substantial over the long term. In order for a bond to pass, it seems that many things have to come together. A commonality is that Eugene Field is not safe as it is, but most people need specific, detailed plans that show wise educational and fiscal planning. It must also be mentioned that much of the voting community is outside of the Eugene Field boundaries. They too must be convinced. As our district motto states, every child is a promise. It is becoming more and more apparent to me that our community does not take this lightly. In the same manner, each school is an asset to our district and we have an obligation to all of our kids at all of our schools and to the taxpayers that support them. I ask that this solution be considered as the decision-making time grows near. Thank you.
I just kinda wanted to follow up on what Courtney said after I read her article in Our Town. It got me thinking that I've never heard anything about, you know, the possibility of, can we add on to Robert Frost? Can we put a pod there and make it a K through five and make Mark Twain a six through eight? It just seems like if it's something that we can look into, it might be more economically feasible to do than build a tens of millions of dollar school that only is benefiting the in-town kids. Because being an out-of-town voter, it's, it's hard for me to think about my children coming into this high school that I had no problem with paying for with the bond and they're gonna get no, no support for their school with this. And I think we need to look as the, at the district as the big picture and not just Eugene Field.
Questions?
No, I do wanna make a quick response and I just wanna first thank you for all your effort. Courtney read your email earlier when I received it. Just, I guess my response is kinda limited, but it's really, we've looked at great length into those sorts of ideas and what Dr. Gabe said has really come back to us time and time again, which is, not only time and time again, but we did a lot of research into why the last bond failed and we got the message that it was way too complicated for the majority of voters. And so, one of the things we tried to do going forward here is to really make a simplified plan that can be accepted by the majority of voters. And your plan makes a lot of sense on paper, but I don't know that we could get supportive of it. Like you said, we need to get a commonality of support from, from everyone. So those are just my personal thoughts really on it. But we have looked at detail into adding a pod onto Robert Frost and to other options as far as, you know, what we can do there. So it's not a new, I guess I'm just saying it's not a new thought for us, even though you maybe hadn't heard about it. We, we have looked into those things.
So a couple of, a couple of things that I, that came to my mind after reading your email earlier today to Courtney was to add, Robert Frost was designed to add a pod under the place shed, but that would, a pod would usually take care of one grade. To add two grades up there would, I think would be, you know, even more expensive than it would be to add, well, naturally than to add one pod on. But then you're also looking at a school with 600 kids probably in K-5 and that's, that's a really big school, especially for that age group. And also Mark Twain does not have, in the shape Mark Twain is in right now, or the state it's in, there's not room for another grade up there. It's, so you'd have to do some, some adding on up there also. And then even in the outlying schools, to move more kids out to them, a lot of those schools are, you know, at or near capacity in some of the grades. Not all of them, but, but a lot of them are, so you'd be doing some, you'd have to do some adding on and some work at the outlying schools too, I would assume. So I just, I mean, off the top of my head, it seems like it might be cost prohibitive, but those were just some of the thoughts I had after reading. Because we have looked at numbers and things like that. Some of, some of those ideas have come up before and, and it's a kind of, it's a numbers issue, you know, kid, kid-wise and dollar-wise, so.
But I think it's also an issue of community support. You know, there's a lot of people in town that don't wanna get moved out, to out-of-town. There's a lot of people that are in our K-8s. I mean, one of the things we have here in this district is a really diversity amongst our schools. You know, different choices and parents can, you know, face being available, they can send their kids and they can get different educational opportunities. And you know, a lot of parents really like, we've heard over and over again, just as strong, we like our rural K-8s and, you know, we like our mixed grades and, and some schools do have straight grades and some have, you know, mixed grades. I think the more of those things that we try and disrupt, the less and less likely we become to try and, you know, pass a bond and solve the really pressing problem that we have.
So I'd just like to make a, a comment and I also wanna thank you for having the courage to come here and speak tonight and for the work that you've done. I read your letter with great interest and we have had a number of other letters voicing a similar idea. And for myself, I don't think that we've explored that option as deeply as we should as a board. I think the focus has been very narrow and very singular on Eugene Field and replacing Eugene Field. And I absolutely agree that we have some very serious issues there, particularly life and safety issues. But we also have life and safety issues that are very closely similar in terms of seismic events with at least two of our rural schools, our rural elementary schools. And that would be Central Howell and Butte Creek because they're actually designed in an era where it was fashionable to build more window than wall. And I also, I believe that we really should examine the option of, of looking at, not at a school building, but at the needs of our entire elementary student community. We are a unified district now. We're not sort of a Balkanized in-town versus out-of-town configuration that we used to be. You know, it's not that sort of town versus country thing that we used to have. We're one district and we should function as one district. And we've taken very good care of our high school age students, but we have not taken care of the needs of our entire elementary student community district-wide. And I think for myself, that's what we should be looking at as we approach a decision about what to do about unsafe buildings and our elementary students. So, so I hope that we'll have some more discussion. It's hard to tell.
Any other questions for Courtney or Darcy? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name's Chris Mitchell, I live in Salem. I have 47717. I, written mine, excuse me. Bring my daughter into Robert Frost currently and my son will be starting at Eugene Field next year. So I've been involved in this for a few months now, along with just being involved in Eugene Field for the last 14 years or so. I know the building well, I know the staff and them very well and that's why I bring my son, one of my children, over to this district. I wanna kinda touch on a few things that I've learned over the last few months that is, that has impressed me quite a bit. And it's kind of outside just Eugene Field, it's kinda more speaking towards community and district and differences of opinions and solutions. I've, I've heard a lot, I've spent a lot of time in this town. And it's actually, it's amazing, for two, for two reasons in my opinion. And it's just that, and that this has the ability to bring the community together, the district together, to solve problems. But it also has that ability to tear it apart just as quickly. And so, I wanna thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak and to get our opinion here and that you're taking so much time to listen and respect all of our opinions. I understand that we need to be whole district thinking and the shopping of kids and the repairs of all of our schools, which is outstanding. But at this point in time, Eugene Field needs the most amount of attention. It's not just seismic, it's not just electrical, it's not just HPC, it's location, site, it is. And when you start adding all those ands up, it really makes a difference. Yes, you can work too. And absolutely, and I will fight and advocate for those students also. Research, however it is done, necessary. Right now, I think it's Eugene Field's turn. All the way back to the 1980s, it was Eugene Field's turn. And so I just wanna keep that in mind as you guys move forward in your decision-making plan. And I also have a bit of a challenge. So, here we are, we're this group of parents, Facebook, staff, teachers, waiting for direction, waiting for something from you, waiting for that partnership that gives us the ability to move forward and to use the resources for research, for whatever, to be able to partner up. I want to be able to, I want to be able to call you up and say, hey, let's go talk to anybody. Let's go, let's go get another opinion for rural schools. I would love to be out there talking to them, not looking for a vote, not looking for anything else, other than the opinions that have been shared here tonight. The new perspective. Of course, I talk to all the people who are in support of closing Eugene Field. I'm also speaking with people who are not in support of closing Eugene Field. That's great. I have valued those opinions just as much as I have valued the ones that I shared. And so I hope that you guys can help take that initiative in that. We're here, we wanna help, we need you guys to come to us too. We need help from you and direction and how you want us to move next, to use the resources that are being offered. I also work as a maintenance director for a 95 thousand square foot building.
Chris, about one minute, okay? Thanks.
I take one problem at a time. So, it's kinda my philosophy of maintenance and how I manage my facility. So, it has worked well for me so far.
Questions for Chris?
No, Chris, I appreciate the way your, your perspective on that though, that, you know, there's two ways to look at the diversity or the unification, I guess, of their district. One is that the district can unify around Mark Twain and solve that problem for, and then we can unify around other problems as well. And attacking one problem doesn't mean that we're, you know, leaving others out. I mean, there's different perspective way to look at that, so I appreciate that.
It's actually something I write in my business plans and models. This year I'll have X amount of money towards these projects and next year I'll have to address these ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Okay, we'll also have a, oh, Celeste.
My name is Celeste Lopez and I live at 1308 Frontier Street in Silverton. This really is sort of a side issue, not directly related to the bond necessarily, but I hope that as you consider short-term and long-term solutions, that you also consider how many people have spoken up about having concerns about their children's health and the air quality concerns in the building. I've heard over the years from so many parents who, it never would occur to a parent that the school building might actually be making their child sick, but in retrospect, many kids, as they move on to Robert Frost, parents realize, oh, my son, my child, my daughter had asthma and allergies and respiratory infections and when they moved on to Robert Frost, they disappeared. And having the last two principals at the school develop such serious and chronic sinus problems and infections that they both had to have sinus surgery. I know that prior principal before Jennifer Hannan had two sinus surgeries and continued to have sinus problems until she was not in the building anymore. And a lot of staff do have health concerns, have respiratory concerns, have sinus concerns and many children as well. And I think that the district needs to more deeply look into this issue, even if those kids are only gonna be in there for one more year or two more years, that, and even if we can pass code, even if we're not out of compliance, I still think this warrants a deeper look. So that's what I wanted to say tonight. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Celeste. Anyone else? We also have a second audience with visitors related to discussion and action items later in the meeting. Last chance? Okay. Moving along to discussion items. Use of the Schleter Campus as an elementary or a middle school. These are a couple of the options that we've discussed as a board. Andy, you had a little presentation about this tonight and then we can have some discussion.
Yeah, I've given you some information that I'd like to refer to as I share these comments. I, use of the Schleter Campus for alternative purpose, elementary or high school is not a new topic. It's a topic that was a part of the bond in 2013. It's been discussed prior with concerns about, especially the structural integrity of that building dating clear back to 1993 when, when the engineering, first engineering study that this district has completed identified the seismic concerns specific to that building. Since then, you've had a study completed in 2008. Also have a state geology report specific to, to the building as, as being about 100% collapse potential in a, in a seismic event, major seismic event. So with that said, with that said, and the recent conversation we've had about the use of the, of the Schleter Campus, I put together some information with some talking points for you to refer to with no intent of action this evening, but clearly with the intent at some point in the, in the near future, if you're to take action tonight to approve the recommendations from the Eugene Field Task Force. So referring to the first page that I've given you, what I did is I went back and I reviewed the, the summary of public input that you have received to this point from, from multiple opportunities by the public to present information over the last nine, 12 months. And with that information, I identified a couple of themes, or a few themes, how, how use of the Schleter Campus for, in the future, addresses the common themes of the public input that you've received to this point. And I'll identify these, even though you And I'll identify these, even though you have them in front of you. It allows you to move out of Eugene Field, a common public theme. It allows you to provide suitable facility to educate Silver Falls students. It allows you to utilize existing buildings and use your resources wisely, again, summarizing from the public input that you received. It allows for improved technology and infrastructure, and it allows for an option of a permanent home for Community Roots Charter School. Again, as an option. I also compared information that you obtained from the public specific to the potential for another bond, and information from the public specific to the topic of building and safety. And these came largely, by the way, from the multiple focus groups that were completed last fall, as well as the community forum input from quite a few people in this community. And to summarize these thoughts, from those specific topics about a future bond and building and safety, this allows for a simpler, more specified target. We've heard some of that information, conversation already from some of you this evening. It's limited in scope and crystal clear in intention, again, summary information to you from, from your public input. It provides for immediate, excuse me, immediate action on the highest priorities. And in this case, the highest priority is a remedy for Eugene Field. And it's less expensive than the 2013 bond attempt. Again, another theme, another common statement made by folks that you've heard from, that 36.9 million was way too expensive. There are some assumptions that are made about use of the Slater Campus, and I want to be real clear about these, that, and these have been discussed in the past as well. But in order to use that, I think most appropriately, addressing the safety needs of the building and even using some comparative information we did prior to the 2013 attempt, it would require removal of the oldest two and three-story portions of the building. Those are the most seismically unsound concerns about that building were communicated to voters prior to the 2006 election, and again, dated clear back to 1993, concerns about that structure. The studies that we have indicate that the single-story portions, the gymnasium, the multipurpose room, the old kitchen, have some structural, sufficient structural integrity that with some additional updating would serve this district for decades to come.
So Andy, just to be clear, the two-story portion you're talking about, two and three-story portion is the brick structure that's on Slater Street, the main base entrance portion of the school?
That's correct. The original 1938 portion of the school. And then with that removed, it would infill with educational space, new construction. I'm also gathering some information now, and we've discussed this option in the past, and that's the use of off-site volumetric construction for that infill as an option, especially as a cost-saving option that would still provide a long-term solution for use of that site. Upgrade and use of all the single-story portions, multipurpose room, kitchen and gym would require removal of the old egg and industrial arts shop building, and there would be required off-site improvements as a result of traffic impact, and that comes after a multitude of conversations that we've had with the city, and would fall in line with the recently city-adopted West Side Land Use Development Plan.
And I'll interrupt again, but for the benefit of the public that's here, volumetric construction is essentially off-site construction done in a giant manufacturing-type facility using repetitive type of spaces and specified dimensional, dimensionally efficient efficiencies and things like that, and then come and built and erected then onsite.
That's correct.
There's been a number of schools in the Northwest that have gone to this type of construction, saved significant amount of dollars, doing that offsite, doing much of the work offsite, bringing it onsite, and basically putting it together and erecting stuff.
It's like modular homes. Yep. They're built in factories and then transported, so.
And then finally, we've had some conversation about this, we've asked for public input about this, it's clearly been a talking point, and that is the, just some benefits or lack of, or additional information related to conversion of the Slater Campus into either a K3 campus or into a grade six, seven, eight middle school campus. And if you recall, because I know we've heard some conversation about grade configurations this evening, a couple of meetings ago, we did talk about multiple options related to what the Slater Campus could be, and from an enrollment standpoint, converting the campus, if you were to convert it into a middle school to a grade six, seven, eight middle school would be, would be the most appropriate conversion, and would allow for minimal, I think the least impact at Robert Frost and Mark Twain in order to appropriately accommodate their remaining students in the town schools. So if you take a look at just some additional filters that I put on there, cost, converting it, Slater Campus to a K3 as compared to a 68, the cost of converting to a K3 would be less than it would be a 68, largely due to the fact that if you convert it to a 68, you will have to provide some improvements to Robert Frost and Mark Twain, and additional space, especially at Robert Frost. The complexity of the project and timeline, or anticipated timeline for completion, converting it to a K3, I think would take you less time. And it would, it's essentially picking up Eugene Field and would be moving it to the Slater Campus. And so by not including Mark Twain or Robert Frost in that formula, there are just some natural tendencies to minimize the complexities and very likely minimize the timeline to get the job done. Educationally appropriate use of the facility, and we've had a couple of conversations about this, converting the Slater Campus into a K3 building, I think is questionable when it comes to an educationally appropriate use of the facility. It is a former high school, so it's more ideally suited educationally for a middle school, when you think of the gymnasium, the green space, the proximity to the high school for shared programs and a number of other reasons. And so, I think that's an important value to identify. And similarly, the input which reflects a community agreement of use, based upon the input that you've received to this point, especially the most recent survey, the overwhelming majority of people who support use of the Slater Campus, which was the largest volume of the comments that you received in getting out of Eugene Field, but the majority of those comments reflected conversion into a middle school as compared to an elementary school. Now, that didn't go into the detail of identifying the less expense that would be required converting it to an elementary school, but clearly, if you're to use any kind of a standard for comparison purposes, I think that's an important distinction to make, is that the people who at least submitted information to you generally see the Slater Campus at some point in the future being a middle school campus. So Mr. Chair, that's just some information I wanted with the board for, as you continue your conversations.
That's good information. Thanks, Andy. Any questions for Andy?
Actually, I have a question. Andy, you mentioned the overwhelming majority of the responses. How many respondents were there? And my second question is, how many potential respondents should there have, or could there have been?
Well, there were 6,000, over 6,000 responded, or excuse me, surveys sent out, David, and we received 385 back specific to that survey.
Okay. The second question I have is about the traffic studies.
Right.
What, how comprehensive and how deep are those studies? Sort of anecdotally, if you're over there in the afternoon since the high school has been completed, it's a very busy area.
You're right.
Right now. So moving the traffic that is associated with Eugene Field and its current location to that neighborhood, even with streets upgraded, widened, I'm assuming, which is going to be quite expensive, I'm curious about that.
Sure.
I think that's a natural concern.
I, so David, do you want to know what that process looks like to implement a traffic study?
Well, I want to know if we're considering using that for a school, reactivating that site.
Right.
For a school, now that we have the traffic associated with the high school, I'd like to know what we're getting into.
Sure.
Because potentially, it's going to be very expensive and potentially very disruptive to the neighborhood in that area.
The, what I can share with you is that a traffic impact study is a requirement for use of that facility, and would be really required for essentially any new construction, even, even in the county, potentially, depending upon how much of the change you anticipate with the permit. But my understanding is that the traffic impacts study requires specific information such as the anticipated use of the building, in other words, if it was going to be a K3 as compared to a 68, traffic engineers use a variety of information to help formulate the likely impact on the building, number of trips per day, both AM and PM, bus traffic, and there are engineers who do this for a living, which the district would have to secure in order to identify what that impact would be. And then that would be part of the approval process with the city of Silverton. It's my understanding at this point, and I think this is, this is based upon information we've received in the past, but the likely impact, traffic impact, would be somewhere in the range of the $700,000 to potentially $1 million in that range to reactivate that campus as an elementary or a middle school. That's speculative somewhat, but it's based upon what I've understood with conversations with the city and based upon information that we received during preliminary planning for conversion of the Slater Campus to a 58 building for the 2013 bond.
Thank you.
But Andy, that would have to occur even if we move the kids up to Robert Frost, we'd still have to have a traffic study.
That's correct.
The impact, yes.
Yes, you'd still have to have a traffic impact study.
Yeah. Yeah, I know you said this isn't necessarily an action item tonight, but I think it might be prudent for us to consider to maybe provide some formal direction to the district on some of these items tonight.
Yeah, this isn't an action item. For the benefit of the audience, this part isn't an action item tonight, it's just a couple places that the board has kind of informally landed on with some preliminary work we've done. We need to do some more work, because as Andy talked about, we've, we're looking into some volumetric construction and things like that. So, so the board needs to do some more, some more work on this part before it becomes an action item. So it's just mainly discussion.
Primarily around, we need to develop more, more work around the scope and the cost of these various options.
Yeah, yeah. Other discussion on this tonight, Slater as a K3 versus a 68?
I just, no discussion, I just feel that it's definitely more suited for a middle school going forward, you know?
Yeah.
Just, it's, but that's going to cost more.
Yeah.
And that's the binary.
It all depends on the, on the bottom dollar, how much, how much more of the scope of that project is.
Yeah, we may want to keep in mind, if we go down that route, is to build it in such a way where we could easily convert it to a middle school down the road as well, get the kids out of Eugene Field, get them over there at some later time. Move, move kids around and make it how it should be.
I think that's, I mean, I think that's a pretty good idea. We discussed it a little bit at our last work session. It seems to me that that could probably be accomplished without very much cost, with a little bit of foresight.
You just want to avoid the moves, you know? Move them here for 10 years and move them somewhere else, I just, we'll have to work that out, but it's definitely a middle school site. That's just my only comment there.
Yeah, it seems to me also that, I mean, that, that is, that is an option, but it also seems like there could be some fallout from the public if we start talking 10 years down the road about, about converting Slater now to a middle school from an elementary, it's like, well, why didn't you do that in the first place? But in my mind, it just depends on, on the cost of each project.
Yeah, you got to go look at the cost, the fallout in the public is going to be around cost.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm anxious to hear some of the results of the work we're having done on the volumetric construction, because that could save some significant dollars, and so, anything else on this one? Okay, Julie?
I have a hard time picturing it anything other than a middle school. The more I talk to people, you know, it seems like we should do it right the first time around and not have an idea that's 10 years down the road. I mean, it's, you know, it might be somewhat more looking into the other options of how to construct, I think is important, but, you know, doing the K through 3 through at Robert Frost, doing the Mark Twain on 4th through 5th, you know, or, and 6th through 8th at Slater, I mean, if that's more of what the public is asking for, it would upgrade all those schools, you know, figure out what the construction really, those costs are, and look at a long-term solution and not like do a 10-year, we should do this, or modules, let's do it right for our kids. I don't know, I kind of am thinking more along that route, and the idea that we just move into Slater Street, and I think it's so important, people are really questioning us putting kids back in that school, and granted, we're not putting them back in that school, we're, the part that's unsafe, we are not putting kids back into, but I think that's also, the perception is very loud and clear that that's what they're thinking as well, so I think we need to be really careful around that.
Yeah.
Well, Julie, I'm 100% in agreement with you, but here's, I guess, I've been told several times this week by people that they would like to know more from the board, what we're thinking, and so I appreciate the discussion we've had here tonight, more than usual. But, but so, with that thought in mind, I guess I'll just share a little bit. I'm 100% in agreement. My concern is, is what if, what if that bond project is too complicated? Because that's, that was one of the loudest messages we heard, too complicated, too expensive. We voted no, it's too complicated, too expensive. So, what if that's too complicated and too expensive and they vote no again? Then to me, that means we have to, at that time, probably make some drastic decisions we don't like. You know, that might mean closing the doors on Eugene Field and bringing in mobile modular structures and putting them out in the parking lots of Slater Street, and I don't think any of us like that. I think that, you know, my opinion is, we either believe that it's a dangerous school and we move the kids out, or we don't. What are we talking about? So if we're just going to waffle, I shouldn't say waffle, because I don't think that's what we're doing, but I don't think we can walk both sides of that fence. Anyway, but that's, that's my concern in not going forward in the direction that you and Tom and others have said, so I don't know what the right answer is, but just to lay it out there.
On the complexity part of it, about, you know, moving, moving kids from Eugene Field to Robert Frost and Robert Frost to Mark Twain, that, that part, because I know that's been a concern, I spoke with some, with somebody who was on the, at the last bond, who was somebody who was on the driving committee for that, the PAC, the PAC committee for that bond, and they told me that they didn't think the complexity of that, of that part of the bond was what made that bond fail. They thought it was the uncertainty of all the other dollars we were spending. She said in talking to people, that the, the part about just, you know, leapfrogging the kids wasn't complex to people, that that, she didn't think that was the issue. It was, you know, a lot of other stuff in the, in the bond that made people feel uncertain. So, I just, that was something that this person addressed kind of specifically, so.
And I've heard the opposite, that it was confusing, they were dealing with too many issues at one time, they weren't focused on a single issue. So, I think it's both opinions out.
Oh, I think so too. I think so too.
So if I could just make a comment, I, I think the voters in this district, like the voters everywhere else, are very intelligent, and they're very able to sort out information and understand complex scenarios and make decisions about complex scenarios. And I think the complexity issue, and I'm just going to say this, I mean, because I'm a part of this board too, I think the board in the last go-around with the bond attempt was the culprit. We couldn't tell people what it was we were going to do, and we couldn't tell them what we were not going to do. And so there were all kinds of things floating around the whole district about a 900-student middle school, about closing the K8s ultimately and bringing all of the rural elementary students to town, and there was all kinds of stuff. And I said in the last go-around, the last bond attempt, that we need to tell the voters exactly what we're going to do and exactly what we're not going to do before we ask for money. So as, another comment, I think that the Slater Street Campus is probably best suited for a middle school, and I guess my personal position at this point would be, if it's a couple million dollars difference, we need to do the right thing educationally for our students the first time, rather than go back later and try to straighten it out.
Anything else?
Yeah, because we, I'll just, on the confusion on the last bond, we hadn't decided what our configurations were going to be. We hadn't said we're going to leapfrog the kids, we didn't know if it was going to be K2, K5, we really hadn't figured that out yet, and so people didn't know what they were hoping for. And, you know, it's, it was, it's, so there was that complexity, but there's also that underlying factor that we're still paying for that high school, and it just keeps, you know, they're, they're still paying, you know, for that high school for the next 12 or 14 years yet, and it just seems expensive for a long time going forward, and that was a, that was a factor. I don't think, if, if we didn't have that high school bond to pay off, I don't think it'd be complicated at all. You know, it doesn't look that complicated when you have plenty of money to spend, but when you're trying to, you know, I think, I think if, if that, if that high school bond wasn't still there, it wouldn't seem that complicated. People could say, okay, we can afford this, let's, let's, let's do something. People could say, okay, we can afford this, let's do something.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the Eugene Field Facilities Task Force Recommendations. This is an action item later tonight. And I'm just gonna take a minute and read these real quick, just for the benefit of the audience. There are a couple changes that we, that the board made, so it's kind of an amended version. The recommendations are school-based. As a result of limitations related to site size, functionality of systems, safety concerns, and overall inadequacy to appropriately meet the instructional needs of students, permanently close Eugene Field School. The second bullet, consider all available district property to move Eugene Field School based on economy, safety, and community input, and create a timeline for these actions to occur. District-based recommendations. Proactively inform the public and provide opportunity for additional public input related to these recommendations. Continue operation of all other district schools. Funding-based. Funding levels should reflect the priority need to address the Eugene Field Facility only. Multiple funding sources should be considered. These include a reasonable bond election amount, sale of surplus district property, grants for facility improvements, and limited use of general fund revenue. If the board agrees to a capital construction bond, the committee recommends a November 14th election, or November 2014 election, excuse me. Other recommendations, collaborate with Community Roots School Board in planning for a permanent home for the charter school, and develop an action plan for future use of the Eugene Field School Site. So this is, like I said, this is an action item later tonight to approve these or not approve them. We need to have some discussion on it tonight. I'd kind of like to do like we did last time and just start on one side and go down and have everybody kind of give their opinion on this thing, if that's okay with everybody. And if you want to, you know, decline and speak up later, that's fine too, but. Irv, do you want to start?
Okay. While I agree with some points David made, we as a board need to be focused on what is ahead of us, not what's behind us. All of us board members were elected by the community to be leaders and to make sound financial decisions. I believe we are doing what's best for our students, staff, and community. The young people are our future. We need to invest in them and protect them. As a business owner, I have been hit very hard the last five years by the current recession. I've had to travel 1,400 miles for work, so I know firsthand about hardship. And I still feel that closing Eugene Field is the correct thing to do, and we need to build new buildings at Slater Street. The last six months, it appears the economy has started to pick up. With that comes higher costs for construction, labor, and materials. Now is the time to secure our engineers, architects, and contractors for the best value. I had a conversation with someone last week, and I said it's like standing on the bank of a river, wanting and needing to go to the other side. But because of muddy water, the cold temperature, and the current, you talk about it. At some point, you need to jump in with both feet, with vision, leadership, direction, and determination to reach the other side. I urge the board to jump in with both feet and make the decision to close Eugene Field and build a new school at Slater Street Campus. Because what lies ahead then is a bright future for the students, staff, and that will impact our community in a positive way. So that's what I have to say.
Thanks, Irv.
Thank you. I would sign my name to your favor there, if you want me to. But I appreciate that. So I'm in favor, I, you know, intend to vote in favor of adopting these later tonight when it's an action item. At this point, I would like to see a deadline, but I'm not, I'm not gonna die on that one, so it's for a minute.
I agree with both Owen and Irv as well. I've done some thinking about this over the past week or two, similar to what Irv apparently did. And I'd like to think we ought to have a follow-up motion tonight as well beyond this one. And it would be to give the direction to develop scope and cost for a potential bond target for the November election, that would include removal of the old three-story section of Slater Street Campus, removal of the Ag Science Building, removal and upgrade of the, I'm sorry, remodel and upgrade of the remaining single-story structure to Slater Street. Infill the Slater Street's campus with new construction to provide new educational space, provide safety and security upgrades to all the district school buildings that are used for students per our consultant reports, and also to provide technology upgrades in each of our buildings. That would just flush out the scope, get some cost against it, and we can really have a much better idea what we're talking about.
Makes sense.
Okay.
And before we go down the line, maybe Irv can comment on that too, since you're, and then I'll comment, and then we can all comment. Would that work?
That'll be fine, yeah.
Okay.
On the scope.
Yeah.
And yeah, I concur. That's, I agree with that.
I do as well, and I appreciate, I appreciate you on that. That's out there.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing that, Wally. That's, that's good to get a little, parts of that a little more specific. But just for the audience, just to be clear, that would be a separate motion from the task force recommendations. So as far as the task force recommendations, it's past time to do something with Eugene Field. I mean, Mr. Mitchell talked about it's been an issue since the 80s, and I went there in the 60s, and I think it was an issue then. But it's, it's well past time. That school has seen its useful life. As somebody else said tonight, the problems go beyond the building itself. The site is inadequate, it's between two busy streets, there's no green space, it's too small for 500 kids, for 50, 500 kids. It's our, it's the main, it's our major problem in this district is that building, I think. I totally understand what David was talking about earlier with the problems with some of the other buildings, the cafeteria at Butte Creek, the gym at Central Howell. Those are things we have to start chipping away at also. But if we, if we pass a bond for Eugene Field to take care of that, that problem, then there are some dollars available through construction excise tax and some things like that to start chipping away at some of those other problems. And that's what we need to do. And, you know, we need to start chipping away at technology. There's lots of needs in this district, but I don't think we can let all the needs we have overshadow the main problem of getting kids out of Eugene Field and into a safer Granted, you know, I agree, David, we need to start chipping away at these things, taking care of some of these issues, but if we can get a bond passed for Eugene Field, I think it frees us up even more to do some of those other things. So that's my two cents. Tom?
Yeah, these recommendations are fine. I guess my only, I guess we're just talking about the recommendations are fine, I guess we're also talking about, you know, the bond and taking care of Eugene Field. It's been, it's been the greatest needed building in this district for 40 years, and yet we built it into a high school. And we kind of, they got pushed to the back burner, and I think that's kind of a shame. And right now, we're, you know, we're dealing with a community that feels overtaxed, or feels like they're, you know, a significant portion of this community feels like they're having a hard time affording this. And so we just need to keep it affordable. That's, that's, I guess I'm sharing a little bit of the anger as I've been through so many reports these past couple weeks, you know, and thinking like, why the heck did they build a new high school when that building was in that shape? You know, should've took the greatest need first, and they did, and weren't a bind right now. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
Well, I think we have a wonderful high school, and I'm really glad we went forward with that. When it comes to the recommendations, I agree with them. The one part that I kind of want to clarify is that the priority to address the Eugene Field Facility only, that it may affect other schools too. You know, and that's just more of a side note than anything. With Wally's recommendation to make a decision tonight about his scope, I'm sorry, I would need to look at it a couple more times, I'm not that quick.
We'll have him, we'll have him reread that later.
You know, I just, one time through is not enough. I'm more of a visual person, so I wouldn't feel comfortable going forward with that this evening.
I can pass it down to you.
Yeah, we'll pass it down.
But other than that, no, I do agree with the recommendations.
So I'll start with the scope issue. I'd like to see us discuss that in greater depth at a work session, rather than take action tonight. I think one of the cardinal rules of board function is that we don't have surprises, and we really haven't had a good conversation about what we're gonna, what we're gonna ask for. So I'd like to see us consider that at a work session and have a deeper conversation about it before we actually take action. For the most part, I agree with the task force's recommendations. The funding-based part of it concerns me, and I'll go back to the conversation that we had in audience with visitors. I think the priority need to address Eugene Field Facility only is, is very important. Eugene Field is number one on the list of seismically dangerous buildings. Two, three, and four are Butte Creek, Central Howell, and Mark Twain. And the reason is that they are, for the largest part, unreinforced masonry, more windows than walls, they are seismically almost as vulnerable as Eugene Field, and there are students in there every school day, just like Eugene Field. In addition, Butte Creek, and, I mean, we're making a lot of noise about the busy street on either side of Eugene Field. When the school was actually opened back in the 20s, the same concerns existed. And to my knowledge, we haven't had a student or another pedestrian injured all the time that students have been attending school there. Central Howell and Butte Creek both sit on busy highways. And I've been out of Butte Creek when the state police weren't there, and the school zone light was flashing, and actually have had people pass me at high speed on that highway. I'm surprised that we haven't had injuries at those schools. There are life and safety issues at the other rural elementary schools as well. And I understand that the people here have very high emotions about this, and you're involved in this, and you have a good reason to want to be out of Eugene Field in its current state, and I support that. But I think that the focus on one building is very narrow. We should be looking at the needs of our entire elementary student population district-wide and providing the best facility and the highest level of safety for each and every one of those kids. Okay? So, having, the other question I have about funding, we have the statement about multiple funding sources, and the last piece of that is limited use of general fund revenue, and I wondered if our superintendent could explain that to me? What does that mean? For the most part, in my experience, cumulative experience of about 30 years as a school board member, the basic rule is that you cannot use operations funds which are designed and allocated for the education of students and the operations of the district in support of the education of the students for capital projects. So.
The school board through its budgeting process, David, can choose to use the general fund dollars for what it feels, believes is most appropriate through the budget development process. So I'm not aware of any limitations on use of general fund dollars. I believe the intent of the task force with that statement in there was to, was to be certain that the message was clear to the board, and if you were in agreement to the community, that other larger revenue sources would be required in order to manage and carry out a project of this caliber. That if general fund dollars were to be used, that it would be the minimal use, if at all, David. So I, because it's in there, I'm not certain that the task force is saying it should be used, but wanted to be certain that the message was clear to the public that if it had to be used, it would be the minimal use, a minimal use if at all.
Do you have anything else, David?
Do you want me to keep going?
We give you every opportunity. We give everybody every opportunity.
If I'd had time, I would've brought pages and pages of character remarks, but I just didn't have time today. So I'm sorry to disappoint you.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Just a couple comments on a couple things people said. Tom, about the high school, and that being done first, I was on the board at that time. And I remember, you know, Eugene Field was a major concern, but the oldest part of the Slater Campus was also a major concern. And with the amount of kids there, I think the thinking of the board at the time was take, take care of the high school, get them relocated, then we can have that Slater property freed up for other uses.
Yeah.
And, which involves, you know, passing another bond. So that was kind of a little bit of the background behind that.
But that was discussed, I actually voted against that because of that very reason.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't, that wasn't like, I just think that that was a bit of oversight, thinking, okay, we're passing this high school bond, and it's gonna take 20 years to pay off. Well, that means we can't really, it's gonna be hard to pass a bond for 20 years, so are we gonna be able to make, you know? Should've added a couple million dollars in there to help that worst building that needed all that need to help, you know, put a heating and ventilation system in it and brace it up a little bit. It wasn't, I'm just venting that as a little bit of a.
Yeah, well, and.
Pointing that out, I guess, retroactive. Hindsight's always 20/20.
Oh, yeah, hindsight is 20/20. But I, I'd be willing to wager that if we had done Eugene Field first, we'd be talking about the high school today instead of Eugene Field.
Yeah.
So.
Why would you?
Yeah. Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't saying build Eugene Field, I was saying just, you know, just fix it up to get it to 20 more years. With vision saying, okay, when this bond passes off, now we have, you know, our taxpayers probably have money available, you know, when one bond drops off, now we can look forward and do something else.
Yeah.
Try to make things last a little longer.
Yeah.
So anyway, sorry, I'll let you finish.
No, and David, just about your comment about the busy streets out of, or the busy roads out of Butte Creek and a couple of the other schools, that's very true, but I also, I also believe it's not comparing apples to apples, because every exit from Eugene, well, almost every exit from Eugene Field, the kids are going right out, you know, 20 feet away from a busy road. And that's not the case at Butte Creek so much. And the buses, I think, pick up at the end of the building, and same thing at Central Howell, it's, there's just a little more space. I just, I don't know. But I totally get what you're saying about the needs at the other buildings also, so.
I think that's very true, Tim, but there is also the potential for a crash into a bus that's exiting that area. And at Central Howell, you have almost the identical situation that you have with Eugene Field. You have a, you have a school on a corner where all of the exits come right out into a narrow parking lot, and then you have the street, or the highway, essentially.
Actually, all the, in that case, all the classroom doors actually open up into the back courtyard, and there's a gate they have to go through, or go through the office to get out to the cars.
Okay.
Yeah.
I still don't think it's the safest.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So I have a question about the funding levels should reflect the priority need to address the Eugene Field Facility only. When we say that, we're talking about the funding levels, we're talking about what we're going to ask for in a potential bond request, only addressing the Eugene Field issue?
So your, your concern is if we, if we would decide to make the Slater property a junior high, there'd also be money going into Robert Frost and Mark Twain?
That's right. I think that that particular sentence.
That's a good point.
Oxysse us into, it doesn't give us any flexibility if in our continuing discussions we decide that there's a better thing to do than simply move Eugene Field to a new site.
Also, that statement doesn't match what I was proposing either. If we took out the only, I think that could.
To address Eugene Field.
And do you know what the genesis of that was, that only, I mean, was the thought there, the strong public input about needing to be simple and concise on our decision-making?
Yes. What you described is exactly the reason.
I'm fine taking the only off. In my mind, you know, in my mind, and sometimes I think too simply, but in my mind, the statement's okay the way it reads, because we are addressing the Eugene Field situation is the main, the main thrust of this. But I think we could, you know, like Wally said, take off the only, it would get to maybe closer to what you're thinking, David?
Well, I still think we should have the flexibility and the opportunity to discuss doing something for the entire elementary student community. And just as Ms. Good's letter suggested, and some of the others that we've seen. So, I mean, closing Eugene Field is fine, but what we do after that is something I think we have to have deeper conversation about.
Well, I don't think that's where these task force recommendations are leading us. They're leading us to, to close Eugene Field and get out of there, make a plan, and not that being the main thrust of what we're talking about tonight. Not. that being the main thrust of what we're talking about tonight. Not, not a bunch more discussion about moving kids, you know, different schools and upgrading here and upgrading there. I think the main, I think the, that what the, the recommendations the task force gave us in my mind is to address Eugene Field's situation and to move forward. And I think that's, that's what I assumed we were talking about, so.
You gotta eat the apple one bite at a time.
Yep. You guys, does it, how does it, does everybody else see that the same way?
Well, like I said earlier, that I thought, yeah, the need to address the Eugene facility may affect other schools is what I had, I said, but leaving out "only," I would be fine with that as well.
Yeah, I'm fine leaving out "only." I do think, though, that you've gotta eat the apple one bite at a time. I mean, we, we can't just choke on the whole thing, so...
Yeah. But is, but also, I mean, this document, it says on the top, it's a recommendation. We don't have to follow this precisely.
No, we don't.
You know, and this is, this is a document prepared by, how many people were on it?
Fifteen or so.
About fifteen or so. Yeah, about fifteen. This is their recommendation, you know. And I don't really wanna put words in their mouth by changing it. You know, this is their recommendation. I'm, it's a great recommendation, but we'll use it as a strong input, and then ultimately, this is our decision. So that's kind of the way I, you know, so...
So I, I think that's a good observation, Tom. I mean, this, oh, in the history of Silver Falls School District, we've had a multitude of task forces, and the board has adopted recommendations time and again, and completely discarded those recommendations in the face of new reality. So, you know...
So what are you saying, adopt 'em as is and then discard 'em, or, or, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're suggesting. We may be, we may be faced with a new reality. Who knows?
Well, no, just, well, adopt 'em as, adopt 'em as is and use it as a document to, to go forward. I mean, this is their recommendation from their, their input. And, but, I mean, and it's, it's, it's good. I accept it. I may not agree with it all, but it's their recommendation. I don't wanna change, just 'cause I, just 'cause I might disagree with something here, doesn't mean I wanna change it. It's, this is their recommendation.
Right. And I think that goes to a distinction, a kind of a formal corporate governance distinction in what you do with recommendations. You can, my understanding is you can do basically two things. You can receive them, which means you're, you're really just receiving them into your record, you're not doing anything with them. Or you can adopt them, which then makes them a, a document that we are making our own. And so...
Which is what we're doing.
Which is what we're doing. And so I think when we do that, then we're also adding our input to, to their input. So from that standpoint, to me, it's appropriate that we would make some changes potentially.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yes, I, I understand.
I think it's important to take the recommendations and give, have us have very specific intent. And that's what people, I think, are looking for, is to know what our direction is. I think this gives really good direction. I think it should be exact as possible to what we all agree on. I think leaving out the word "only" is important in this, and that we take it as carefully as we possibly can and move forward with the recommendations and kind of go from there. But not say, oh, well, you know, we don't really need to take them seriously, or sort of, no. We wanna take them as seriously as we possibly can and move forward. And so I think that we should do that. Just leave out the word "only," and it sound like the majority then would be closer to having the same idea of how it should go.
Yeah, in my mind, if we adopt these, we're, we're moving forward, and we're not, we're, we're moving forward to get kids out of Eugene Field as soon as possible, as soon as, as soon as funding levels allow, you know, via bond passage or, or whatever. But it doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't mean we're gonna open discussions about, about moving, moving kids everywhere and making Robert Frost a K-5 and, you know, redrawing boundaries. In my mind, that's the furthest thing from what these recommendations are addressing. They're addressing getting, getting kids out of Eugene Field, and if we adopt these, in my mind, we're moving forward to do that. I mean, I, I assume that was the discussions we've been having for the last, how many months?
Years.
So...
Well, I agree, I agree, Tim. I think that what we're after is getting kids out of Eugene Field. What we do with them after we get them out is, is the next issue.
Oh, I would agree. And we've kind of narrowed that down to the Schleter property, too, one, one version or the other. So, and we did take, you know, the, the task force recommended, given the information they had at the time, they agreed that Schleter's site may be the best location for replacement. And we took that part out because of, because of the back and forth we're on the board about, you know, K-3 or a junior high. So we took that part out so we could continue to have that part of the discussion and, and find the best solution along those lines, so...
So just to clarify, I'm not suggesting that if we have further conversation about what to do with the students that we're, we're dislocating by closing Eugene Field at some point. I'm not suggesting that we're gonna keep them in Eugene Field indefinitely, or that we're going to, I, I think, you know, it, it remains to be seen what we do with those students.
Yeah, this, this document isn't specific. It just says, talks about moving, moving Eugene Field out. Can you find it here? Consider all available district property, move Eugene Field school based on economy, safety, community input. So I think we continue that.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Any other discussion on these? Okay. Any other items? Did you wanna read your, your...
Sure, I can do it again. Somebody wants to pass it back down.
Just for the benefit of the audience.
So, yeah, my, my proposal would be, and, and the reason for doing this is we've done a lot of talking. All these items that I'm gonna mention here, we've talked and talked and talked about, and I think it's time to start moving ahead and getting some detail and really understanding the, the scope and, and the costs that we're, that we're really discussing. So my proposal is to give the district direction to develop scope and costs for a potential bond targeted for the November election that include the following scope: removal of the old three-story section of the Schleter Street campus, removal of the old Ag Science Building, remodel and upgrade of the remaining single-story structures on the Schleter Street campus. I think all those were in the document that Andy presented. Infill the Schleter Street campus with new construction to provide new educational space. Provide safety and security upgrades at all of the district school buildings that are used for students per the consultant reports that we've received. And provide technology upgrade, updates in each of our buildings.
So that would be in the form of a second motion, a second action item tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Administrator and staff reports. Scott, financials.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for taking part in that discussion and, and working on that. That's, that's a lot of work, and I admire you guys for it. You're doing, I think you've done a great job. In terms of the financial report, what I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about today is the general fund. Overall, you guys are in great financial shape. The district's in good financial shape. If you look at the fir, first page, you'll see that the total revenue, we have about nine percent of our total revenue yet to collect for the, for the year. The reason why that's so low is recall that we don't receive a state school fund payment in the month of June. We get two in July, so we already had that one essentially taken in. So we're, we're expecting one state school fund payment, but we still continue to bring in property tax revenue on a regular basis, and we'll do that through June 30th. So, but I also wanted to highlight on the expenditure side in the general fund, if you look there, there's ten million, ten and a half million dollars in budget remaining. Before that, you know, get, a lot of people kind of look at that number and say, wow, that seems like a really high number. But recall that in the general fund, we pay for all of our salaries out of that. And so, like most school districts in the state of Oregon, we provide the final three paychecks for teachers out of that. We do that in June. And so that would all come out of the, the general fund. And if you look at the eye test on the back sheet, on the very back one down there, you can see, down in April, you can see how much money is spent in salaries and in associated payroll costs each month. So for that, that's about two million dollars. So we'll experience that in May, and well, then we'll have three of those in June. So, you know, quick calculation or the math, that ten million dollars of budget remaining will go away pretty quickly. We'll spend, most of our general fund dollars will be spent this year. As appropriate, it's as we budgeted for it, so, and then we also budgeted for a carryover, so, for cementing fund balance. So just wanted to kind of give you a highlight of, of the general fund as we start talking about big picture things, money for schools and projects and those types of things. It's important to know where your cash is.
So it sounds like we're, in your opinion, we're pretty much on target then to meet our projected budget?
Oh, yes. Absolutely, yeah. We keep a really close eye on that, and we're, we're in really good shape. We're, we have not had a lot of surprise expenses, and, but if we were to have those surprise expenses, we'd be able to handle it. And then, you know, the other two pages, the balance sheet, you're kind of used to seeing that. One thing that you may not be used to seeing is we have that positive amount in that checking account. Sometimes that's a negative amount. We've talked about that a couple of times before, and that's just because of a timing of expenses. We are timing our expenses now were such that when we closed the month out, we had more money in that checking account. But you'll notice that the current liabilities number is higher than normal on there, and that typically has to do with purse payments and insurance payments. Those are two big-ticket items. They happen either right at the very first of the month or at the end of the month. So that's why that is. And then nothing really major to report on page three, the cash basis for the schools. Everybody's spending money as appropriate. And we have cut off purchases for this current year that would require deliveries in May or June, because we have to really clean up our, our accounts before June 30th. That's my financial report, unless there's any...
Scott, can you explain why we still have thirty-three percent of our budget remaining on the food services? What's, why is that?
You mean in terms of revenue?
Yes.
That's the claim. We have not received our, our state support. We get some money through the feds that comes in from the state, so we're missing some of that. But our cash flow, as I mentioned earlier in the food services report that I did, I think in December or January, we are a bit more behind this year than we have been in the past. Administration's been working on that and looking at it very closely. But our, the revenue stream, because our lunch count utilization has been low. But we do have some plans in, in place to kind of look at that and improve that.
Okay.
What's, what's happening at Prattham with their only seventeen percent remaining?
Again, that, that's been something that's been going along for a while. They spent a pretty decent chunk of, of money this year for some tech devices and coverages. So that, that amount of money left has been around that particular area. They've spent, they spent more consciously in the winter than, than, than would, than would otherwise spread out, but...
But they're gonna, are they're gonna finish in budget?
Yeah, I think that they will finish in budget. Yeah. And if they, and that's on the, the amount available for carryover, too. Recall that on the, the amount that is not available for carryover, that includes most of those salaries. And we budget on an average salary basis. And so schools that will have a higher, let's say, a more seasoned staff would, you know, in theory, be able to come in a little bit above budget, more than budgeted, because their employees cost more than, than essentially the revenue that we gave them. But it's, it's fairly rare, and I'm surprised at how close it comes out in the end.
Questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Dustin, halfway up here already. Central Howell and title program.
So I come twice a year, and I talk about title programs, but, and I've been the previous two Octobers and the previous May, and there's really nothing new that I can tell you about title programs. The law is a-changing, and we're plugging away. Schools are following their plans. allocations for next year are not final. They won't be final till August, so again, there's nothing really new to report about title programs at this time. So, Central Howell, we're at a hundred and seventy-two students today, and we were at a hundred and seventy-nine last May. We're projecting one seventy-eight to one eighty for next fall. We continue to benefit from Salem Kaiser. Our free and reduced meal count is twenty-six percent, and it was twenty-five percent last year. We have zero migrant ed students, and we serve ELL students from Central Howell and Prattham at Central Howell each afternoon, and nineteen students receive resource room help. And our, we have six and a half classroom teachers as usual, and our configuration tends to change a little bit each year, because right now, as an example, we have twenty-nine first graders. They're not all in one class, but that's a class that we have to deal with as they move on up through the system. Our sports team struggled this year due to youth and inexperience, but that means better times ahead, right? We did our annual bullying survey, which again, I think is really helpful, because it anonymously, anonymously allows students to report who's being bullied, who they believe is being bullied, and who the bullies are. And then I'm able to address that issue with those individual students, both the bullies and the bullied. We are not finished with Oaks yet, although our reading results look really good. We're not complete, so we still have about a week and a half to go. Our math is lagging a little bit behind, but I think that's, I think that's the trend, that math is a little bit behind in the district or the state behind reading. Our accelerated reader program, our students have read this year two thousand two hundred more books than last year.
Wow.
Our kids just are going crazy for reading. And some of the teachers integrate this into their classroom instruction or expectations, and, but a majority of it is just free reading time or reading outside of the classroom. But these are actually the books that they've taken tests on and passed. So that's a, that's an awesome thing, so much reading going on. Seven students this year have achieved the Cougar level, which in our school is the highest level. And there's a K to three level, a four or five level, and a sixth through eighth grade level. And they all receive a lunch of their choice from a restaurant in, in Silverton, and our parent club funds at. I mean, you have to read a lot of books and pass a lot of tests to get to that level, so it's, it's not an easy thing to do. We continue to make weekly use of our One Call Now message. Sometimes, in fact, lately, I've been sending two, the last two Fridays, two, two different messages, 'cause you only get ninety seconds. We had a packed house at our annual Christmas program. And this year, we're gonna try our spring program at the high school. Thank you very much to the high school for allowing us to do that. And the, the parking, the, the temp control, the seating, just being in that nice auditorium should make our spring program very nice. And that is on the twenty-seventh at six-thirty, SHS Auditorium. Jog across America, so we have less than seventy-five miles to go, two thousand nine hundred and forty-two miles from Central Howell to New York City. And so we've got two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six miles. And all but four students have turned in at least one card, so we've had ninety-eight percent participation. Each card is worth one point seven miles, because our track is only point seven, excuse me, it's point one seven of a mile. And we have three students who have turned in over forty cards, and many students, which would be at least sixty-eight miles in personal running.
Wow.
And we have many students who have turned in twenty and thirty running cards. Next year, we're looking to do something around overall fitness with some cardio, push-ups, pull-ups, flexibility, things along those lines. Could look a lot like a traditional fitness testing situation, but a promotion of some type throughout the year and just being overall more physically fit. Parent club, our parent club is like ultra-organized. Now, it's been, it's, it's, it's been okay the last several years, because we have a dedicated group that shows up. But now we have a lot of parents showing up. They've achieved their nonprofit status. Everything's nice and clean and organized, and they have clear meeting agendas, and they've organized these two campus cleanup days. So if you've driven by Central Howell, which I'm sure you all have, you've probably noticed that we have very nice gravel rock in our entire front area, all the way down to the bus parking area, clear, to the corner down Silverton Road. It did not, despite all of that, despite all the packing, the yards and yards of gravel, it still didn't take care of some of those holes. They dug it up, they repacked it. I mean, those, those, the people who showed up to do it are, a lot of our dads mostly, they knew what in the world they were doing. You know, they knew how to attack that project, and they did an excellent job. But despite all their knowledge and experience, they still couldn't get... all their knowledge and experience, they still couldn't get, uh, some of those potholes. It's, I don't know how we're ever gonna deal with that, maybe with, uh, Blacktop or something someday, but, um, and we seem to be the cutoff corner there, um, as you make that turn onto, that right turn onto Silverton Road from Howe Prairie. Um, and then, two weeks ago, we had another campus cleanup. By the way, they hauled off a dump truck full of leaves. So all those beautiful trees out in front, they dump all those leaves and a lot of them into our gutters too. So they, they cleaned our gutters out, hauled away all those leaves, blew the leaves, hauled them away. And then two weeks ago, they brought in another dump truck full of sawdust and they clipped and, um, and, uh, pruned and we spread sawdust. We were counting on three hours and we had so much help, it, we finished all of that in hour and a half. So, that made Central Howl, I don't know when the last time we had any sawdust in any of our flower beds. So, it really looks sharp. When you drive by there, take a look. And they did their annual fundraisers. One fundraiser they are trying to continue to work on is Dimes for Drops. Uh, they want to put in a carbon filter, uh, system, uh, at each one of the drinking fountains in the school to improve the taste of the water. The water is, uh, safe. It is, it is tested every two months and, and it passed all the tests, but for the taste of the drinking water, that's a project that they're looking to fund, just an under the sink carbon filter. Um, we had two Battle of the Book teams. We have Grandparents Day this Friday at 11:00. That's a big, big deal. The gym will be packed with grandpas and grandmas and they'll, they'll, uh, do a little trivia, they'll hear a few songs from the kids and then they'll have a nice lunch provided by the parent club. Track meet that, uh, that Monitor School used to put on and Kevin and Butte Creek are, uh, are putting on this year is the 23rd of May. We had our Alan, Annual Talent Show. We had 29 acts last Friday, performing in front of everyone. And our eighth grade graduation, graduation is June 10th at 6:30 and that's Tuesday. Any questions about Central Howl?
Yeah, you mentioned the Prattham ELL.
Yes.
Kids, do they, they come to Central Howl and if so, how's the transportation work?
It works very easily because, you know, they get out early, so the bus is there and then the bus brings them and they start instruction with Angie Brennan at about 2:15 and she takes them through all of her lesson planning five days a week. And then they go home, most of them are picked up and they go home with their parents. Yeah, it works very smoothly because of the way the schools are offset in their time.
How close to full is the school? How many spaces do you have if you were to fill out, fill up every little spot?
Well, we could, we could always take more, but it's, it gets to a certain number where we don't need to. You know, if we could be at 175 to 180 or 178 to 180, that would be a really nice number. We've had more. I think we were up to 186 a couple of years ago and that seemed really full. And, uh, our middle school, both of our middle school classes were about 34, 35 students and that was really full. And so this year they're around 26, 27, which is a much nicer number.
So you're right in your sweet spot right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, as, as things become more expensive in the budget process, we might have to take on a few more students, but, uh, right now we're in a good spot.
Other questions?
I just wanted to comment, Dustin, that, um, I noticed the parent club working out there and I thought they did a fantastic job cleaning that site up and it, it does well for our district to see that a school that is so well taken care of.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, our custodian does a good job, you know, he has limited time, he's only asked six hours a day there, but the parent club has really, really stepped up and they have a plan to try to, um, take each weekend and come out with, if one person or one family comes out with their leaf blower each weekend in the fall, once the leaves start dropping, then it won't take a humongous effort to get rid of all of them in one weekend or one Saturday in the fall.
That's great. That used to happen years ago and I'm glad, glad here it's...
Yeah, we've got a real group of, uh, of very dedicated, energetic, uh, young parents that are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dustin.
Thanks, Dustin.
Marilyn Anna and Scotts Mills and Homeless Programs.
Good evening. I asked Barb Rivley to join me tonight. We're gonna talk about some programs that she's been involved with at Scotts Mills and as well as at the district level. Um, we're gonna talk about some things that are important to Scotts Mills, but they aren't specific to Scotts Mills. They're more, um, across the district. So the first thing I want to talk about is the STEM Consortium that our district joined earlier this year, the South Metro Salem STEM Partnership. STEM science stands for Science, Technology, Engineering and Math. And the South Metro Partnership is a collaboration of school districts, community colleges, universities, out of school programs, businesses and community partners, and it's all focused on increasing student access and success in STEM fields. Um, there is, there is an article in your packet at the back, I knew, I mean, a legislative brief on the need for STEM education and the need for STEM skilled workers in Oregon and what an economic impact this will have if we increase the output of students who are skilled in these areas. So our partnership, there are three main focus areas. One is in forming a learning community, that's, that's professional development for teachers so that they learn how to teach STEM. The other one is organizing a STEM network, which is a group of business and industry partners who want to work with schools, but don't necessarily know how. And so, the STEM Partnership will work together to train them and link them up with schools. Right now we have the network, or the director for that network is, um, working with one of our, our teachers to pilot part of that program next fall. And it's an internet, an internet-based system for, um, connecting with STEM, with business partners and then getting them to come out into the schools and work. And then the last focus is on increasing early access for students to college courses and credits. And it's not just about providing the dual credits in, um, high school, but also about preparing your K eight students so that they're ready to go into the focused, um, classes that they need when they're in high school and then being able to take the dual credits. The little thing that's added on at the bottom is the website for our STEM. There's a lot of information there if you want more. Um, Oregon Tech in Wilsonville facilitates our community, I mean, our STEM hub community. And so that's part of their website. So, on the back of that first page, you'll see the list of all the partners that are in the STEM Consortium and you'll see our school listed there as well. We're one of, I think that's 14 or 15 school districts, as well as the higher ed partners and the community and industry partners. And then on the next page, you'll see the organization of the STEM. There's an executive board and advisory board and then underneath of them are the three groups that focus on the three strategies, the learning community, the STEM network and the accelerated credits. And I highlighted and added in the name of the new STEM director, she was hired, the STEM Network Director, she was hired after this paper was put to print, so. She's the one that's working with our teacher, Danielle Andrus. And on the next page then, you'll see there are six STEM hubs in Oregon. Ours is, is number three, the South Metro Salem STEM Partnership, but there are five others in Oregon. And then, there's your article, um, Preparing Students for Work-Growing Oregon's Economy. I'm not gonna go over that with you, you can look at that at your leisure. Are there any questions about the STEM Partnership? Okay, so, I think you all know Barb, she's presented to you several times. Um, tonight she's presenting, um, in a dual role, she serves, she's been serving as one of the robotics coaches at Scotts Mills this year. She came in looking pretty scared in the fall when I first met her with her, her son who's a fifth grader?
Fifth grader at Robert Fox.
He came to one of our team meetings and wanted to be on the team and Barb was willing to help, but when I said, "How about if you coach?", she said, "I don't know anything about coaching." And, but she quickly learned, we convinced her to stay, she quickly learned and Barb is, is someone who has a real, um, global perspective, what's good for the whole district and so she has been instrumental in working with the Fox Foundation to get them to support a district-wide robotics, um, initiative and I'm gonna let her tell you about that.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. And Marilyn is right, when I first walked into the first robotics meeting, man was I scared. Um, but I got involved because I could see right away what a great program. It brings so much to the table for the kids. It brings, gosh, science, math, computer skills, uh, leadership skills, team building, engineering, you know, camaraderie, I mean, just so much, just a great program. One of the things that, um, I noticed with the robotics program is there were other schools doing it too, but nobody was doing it together. In other words, we all have resources and we were grappling through the community and at the school, trying to get resources, but I felt like if we worked together and we unified, kind of like the school district, that we could go a lot further. So, uh, with Marilyn's help and with, um, a few other people's help, we organized, um, what's called the Silver Falls Robotics Committee. And that is pulling in all the schools from the Silver Falls School District, um, and inviting them to join with us to build the robotics program in Silver Falls. So, so far we've had three meetings and we've met with the Fox Foundation and they are ready to take us, um, under their wing, so we will work with them financially. They'll be our, they'll be our umbrella. Am I saying that right? Yeah. And, um, I'm just, I'm just really excited to see the community working together. Because as you can see, I'm from Robert Frost, why should I go to Scotts Mills? Well, why not? And I think we should all be doing that in so many other areas. So, um, I hope that our program with, um, the robotics committee kinda pushes out to other areas in the Silver Falls School, School District for the schools to come together. I don't, I don't know what else to say about the...
Any questions? About that?
No, that's very good, that's great.
Yeah.
That is a neat program. Thanks for taking that on, Barb.
Yeah, and we, we hope to, at the end of the summer, we did this with, it was David, Tom and Erv, they all came to, uh, we were getting ready for competition, so we invited them to kind of watch what we do and we hope to do that again.
And to be judges.
And to be judges again. Hopefully, toward, sometime in, in the midsummer, we have some, um, robotics programs that will be going on and we hope to bring you back, so.
So I'd just like to comment about that. I, um, before I was invited to judge, um, last year, I had read about the robotics programs and looked at the newspaper articles and, you know, seen things, uh, from other schools in other places and I, I thought it was neat, but I really didn't realize, uh, the extent of the educational opportunity that it presents to our youngsters. I mean, I was absolutely amazed at, um, how accomplished, uh, these youngsters were in this realm. I mean, the, all of the different things that they, they learned, teamwork, uh, you know, poise and presentation, um, you know, working on computer programs, I mean, things that I could, a computer program is like, you know, for me, that's completely outside my realm of possibility, at least right now in my mind, but these kids are doing this and it's, it's just amazing to watch. I mean, they're so intent and, um, so into this and it's such a great educational opportunity. I just, I really appreciate the work that you're doing and, and I would like to see this, you know, spread throughout the district. I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
If I can add one more thing is, you know, our hope is to build it obviously, um, in the individual elementary schools and, uh, where, where it's lacking is in, in the high school. So we're hoping to be able to feed that in to the high school because that's where it impacts those kid, those students' future in the colleges and through the business world. And if they can have that background, that engineering and the programming and the leadership and the teamwork and they have that on their, uh, high school resume, wow, that's, it's really gonna take them even farther, so.
I think I must've said "wow" two dozen times on the way home, uh, from Scotts Mills that evening. I mean, it was just, I, I see lots of educational programs, but this is really unique and it's really, really interesting. The kids are, are so into it, so, yeah, thank, thank you, thank you for your work.
Yeah, Barb, I would like to follow along with what David said. I think, uh, me and Tom and David were all wowed by the young people's, uh, ability to function in the, um, course that they did. But you being the leader, I think, you know, to unify the district, I think that's huge. You know, you're, it's a good example, it's a win-win for all of the kids and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's, but I, and I, thank you for those kind words, but it's not just me. There's lots of others that are all working together to unify it.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome. And Barbara's testament that just because you walk in the first day and you think you can't do this, that you do survive and you can become a great asset, so. I keep trying to tell that to other principals when they have, when they're looking for coaches, is you just have to talk to people, you have to encourage them and keep letting them know it's doable and we all work together. So, thank you, Barb. The last thing I want to say about Scotts Mills, there's lots of great stuff going on there and I'm not gonna take up more time, but I want to invite you to join us on Saturday, June 21st for our first annual golf tournament fundraiser to get more technology for our school. We have two high school seniors who are doing that as a project and so it's at Evergreen Golf Course on Saturday, uh, June 21st. And when I get the flyers from them, I will forward them to you.
Do you know if that's an all day or if it's gonna be like...
It's gonna be mostly morning, there'll be lunch.
Start in the morning, okay.
Yeah, morning and lunch. Okay, so, and then about the homeless program, um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the focus that Judy, who's the district liaison, and I have been having this year is increasing the education of our staff on what it's like for people living in poverty. I think the last time I met, I talked to you about the, um, poverty, or the poverty simulation that we did, we did as a cooperative effort with, um, our three communities, Mount Angel, Scotts Mills and Silverton. We did that in February, it was really well attended, really well received. Some of you might've seen the article that was in the newspaper following that. Almost all of our administrators attended that training and I think it was a pretty eye-opening experience for us. And last Saturday, or last Friday, there was a similar experience going on in Salem. They called the First Statewide Education on Poverty Summit and I went to that. Most of, there were a lot of education leaders from the state there and I think one of the, one of the facts that was pointed out that really stood out for me was that they talked about how we've made such an effort on, on closing the achievement gap, that the racial achievement gap is closed, has narrowed by 40% in the past four decades, but the achievement gap for economically disadvantaged students has widened by 40% in the past three decades and that's a pretty sobering fact. And so I think that's why we're seeing a lot of effort right now from the state on dealing with the issue of addressing the needs of students who come from poverty because so often they'll come to school not in a space ready to learn because their basic needs haven't been met yet and they can't focus on what needs to happen at school. So that's kind of been a focus for us, um, in the homeless program. Any questions about that program? Okay?
Okay, thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Linda Brown, Special Ed.
Hello, Sue Ellen and Jerelyn. I am so excited to share with you a, a program that we're gonna be implementing next year. Um, we have resources coming in from the Medicaid Department. We have two programs we're involved in, school-based health services as well as the Medicaid, um, surveys that we do and with the, that funding, we're gonna have wellness nurse and special needs nurse. So excited about that. So, maybe a colorful packet, the pink page just tells you a little bit about what wellness nurses will do, um, the yellow page talks about our special needs nurse and then the blue sheet reflects on how many wellness nurse hours each school will have. So Sue Ellen's gonna be working with all my special ed kids and my 504 kids and then Jerelyn's gonna be wearing two hats. She's been through health occupation and wellness at the high school. And then we're working with the hospital and we're gonna contract with another nurse to provide K eights. So that's just really neat. I know one of the things I'm doing this week for our district is actually turning in our medically fragile student and did you know that we have 17 medically fragile students and 20 medically complex students that we serve every day? So Sue Ellen and Jerelyn, you wanna just tell us a little bit snippet about the things you plan to do next year to support our kids with their wellness and special needs?
Well, I didn't know we were gonna talk tonight, but that's okay. Um, I...
Yeah, tell us.
She says, "Oh, can you come to the meeting?" And I was, "Okay, well, anyways..." I do know that we both work long hours to make sure that we can keep the kids as safe as we can, but it's constantly a juggling match for us and I've learned how to prioritize needs probably better than I... And I've learned how to prioritize needs probably better than I should, and I probably can't prioritize a lot of times the things that have to be because there's just not enough me, or not enough Jerelyn. I don't see her, it's nice to see you.
Thank you.
We don't get to see each other very often because we're both going in two opposite directions all the time. So we're really looking forward to having somebody that we can have as a third wheel to take care of some of those things. The vision screening, hearing screenings, dental sealants, all those kinds of things that can be incorporated into the schools just aren't getting done because there's just not enough manpower. And this will help. There's programs out there available to our students. We just are having a hard time accessing them just because we don't have the, the two of us. And we do get lots of good volunteer help, but it is still something that we've been working hard on over the years. But we have to prioritize for the real sick kids first, so the wellness piece is kind of dropped by the wayside. Not that we don't think that's priority, we just have to prioritize. So we're really thankful for being able to get somebody else on board to help us out with this. And we promise you, we will make it worth your while.
My job at the high school is not only juggling the health occupations program, but I am responsible for the health needs and wellness of the 1,200-plus kids at the high school. And the issue has always been, at the beginning of the year, trying to identify all those health needs and have those identified and reports to the teachers the minute those kids come into the building. And as I go through and try to meet those needs, I look and I notice that probably a quarter of the students now have some kind of health need. And some of them are definitely more severe than others, we'll have a certain amount of students with seizure activity. Our juvenile diabetic population is going up. We have a lot of students that are now asthmatic, students that have allergies, and these students, their issues have to be identified early. And the issue was always trying to focus on where the problems were and notify the teachers. And sometimes, because of time, I didn't get that done until halfway through the school year. So this is going to be, make a, this will be a big difference to us. On top of trying to identify the issues, there's always, every day, something going on. And I don't know if Sue Ellen is noticing it, but there's definitely more daily issues, issues that happen in the home that we have to address because they're not being taken care of at home. And today was a perfect example. A student came in and probably had a broken hand that I had to splint, and it was done at home on Saturday. So that's kind of what our days are like every year.
It's very interesting, always. It's always something new, busy.
Yeah, yeah. And it's been, it's been a juggle over the years with health occupations in addition to the nursing piece. I've been working four hours a day, but not really. But it would be nice to have more hours to be able to meet those needs.
She'll get paid for what she's doing.
Now, some of the other things that we're able to do through our Medicaid dollars is we put AEDs in all the schools. We have first aid kits in every classroom, cafeteria. We're paying for hepatitis B shots. We're working on getting the first aid. So really trying to look at the health and wellness of our kids and our staff. So I'm just thrilled that we're able to do this. And thank you all your hard work for our kids.
Thank you.
And Linda, does all, does all, the funding all come from Medicaid or all of it? K-8 as well has been more dramatic, been more dramatic?
It just keeps going up and up.
It just keeps going up. It's been pretty gradual, but it's pretty, it's definitely going up. And I don't know why that is either, outside of the fact that we don't put them anywhere else. So they come to our school, which is a wonderful environment to be able to integrate children into the classrooms and stuff. It's been very well-received by the other students in the school to have special needs kids in classrooms with the regular teachers. And I want to thank the teachers for being so thoughtful in allowing these students in.
So these are kids that maybe 10, 20 years ago would have just stayed at home?
They wouldn't have been in the school environment.
Because we couldn't take care of them, we didn't know how, and now we do.
Right. So they've been institutionalized.
Got it. It's good.
Thank you very much for all you guys do. It's an amazing job. Thank you. Do we have any board reports tonight? Just very quickly, I was able to get out to Butte Creek and Scotts Mills schools one rainy day last week, and I have been able to get to this, to get to school, get around to schools like I was hoping to this year just because of other stuff going on. But it's, it always amazes me, you know, both schools, amazing things happening. A lot of kids work, a couple of different classrooms were getting kids ready for the writing assessments coming up next week. That's always a stressful time, I know, for teachers and for kids. Mr. Lamro out of Butte Creek was playing a fun kind of kings, knights games with his kids, and I could tell they were really into it. It just amazes me the things that teachers come up with to help their kids learn. Another thing, whenever I hit a school, I always get a little bit more about what the Common Core involves. And I was at a first-grade classroom, and they had some of the standards up on the board. And it was, in first grade, kids need to know what nouns, verbs, pronouns, adjectives, adverbs. I was just like, you know, you're kidding. That just seems really a lot for that age group. And the teachers, I think, are a little bit concerned about the kids who aren't developmentally ready for that kind of stuff. So that's going to be a concern as we move, you know, into the Common Core full-time. It's going to be, it's a pretty big deal. And, but our teachers are doing an awesome job. They're doing what they can, they're doing the best they can for all the kids. And that's always apparent when, when you go visit somewhere. So good things at the schools. Nothing else?
Just quickly, the Oregon School Boards Association Summer Conference is in July in Bend. I don't have the exact dates before me, so I apologize for that. But it's a great opportunity at low cost for board members to learn a lot of things. It's primarily focuses on new board members, as well as board members of long service, but covers such things as public meeting law, parliamentary procedure, open meetings law, all that kind of stuff. So it's a great opportunity to learn.
Thanks, David. Moving on to correspondence, we've received a lot of emails, some letters lately, a lot of emails. There was one, one I wanted to share under the correspondence part. At the, at the last meeting, a patriot came forward with concern about emails not going out to, not being sent to the district office, not, and not going, meant for the board, but not making it to the board, to the board members. He had cited an example of, of three emails. I'll just read this because it's something that, an email that he sent to us after the fact of the meeting. And it just kind of clears up, clears up some of that misconception that the board isn't getting emails because we do. "At last night's meeting and in a prior discussion with Tom, I stated I had written three emails to the board. This morning, Tom called asking me to forward all three emails on to him. After sorting through my laptop, I find I need to apologize to the board, the superintendent, and the community at large. While I had written three emails, I had, I had not sent three, only two. The second dated 4/7 and the third on 4/8 were sent. The first was written the week before and left in my draft folder. I had written it and left it set, as I do all emails pertaining to sensitive issues, for rereading to make sure the message they hold is appropriate. Again, I apologize for my inaccurate statement last night and my insinuations that emails are not passed along. This was an inaccurate statement on my part." So I just wanted to clear that up. The, you know, some, when a subject like that comes up, that can gain some legs pretty quickly. But the board does receive all the emails that are sent to us via the district office. So. Anything else under correspondence? I don't think so. Okay. A second audience with visitors. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? Jean.
I'd like to stand. Thank you.
Jean, you need to sign in, please. And Jean, I would really prefer if you sit and just address the board.
Okay, well, I want to address the folks too, so.
Well, they could.
Thank you for the opportunity. This last week, board members received a document from me addressed to Tim in which I went over the things that we needed to be looking at and that we needed to be doing some comprehensive things. Before I do that, I guess I'm going to try to get myself in a different mood. So you all remember Ma &amp; Pa Cattle? Or are you too young?
I told you. You were talking about Ma &amp; Pa Cattle.
Ma &amp; Pa Cattle, they had this farm, and it was, all the buildings were falling apart, and they had an old rickety truck and all this stuff, and a big family, I don't know, 12 kids or whatever. So they lived on a muddy road, and so the kids were complaining that they had a ride in the truck, and when it rained, it didn't have a cover on it. So they all decided inside it as a family, "Well, let's, let's, we need to get rid of that truck, and we're going to do one." So they all looked in the catalog, and they saw a really nice truck that they liked, and so they decided that was going to do. In the meantime, they sold the old truck. And then they found out that the neighbors wouldn't lend them the money. They thought they would. These are people that are always broke. And so they went to the New York relatives, and they wouldn't lend them the money either. And the kids ended up walking on the muddy road, and then they were really complaining. So anyway, we, I think we need to watch out that we have the money, or that we reach for the amount that is going to be available before we get too far and say, "Let's close the school before we know if we can afford anything else." So going to my document, I say there's much at stake, that it's not just in terms of the facilities, it's in terms of our function, it's in terms of our social institution in this, in this community. We have really a lot of strife going on, and we should make an effort to, to try to come together and work together. And the elements, I pointed out, the key elements were safe schools, healthy environments, proper scholastic tools, buildings with longevity, energy efficiency, ease of maintenance, consistent proper maintenance, some technology, more security, public pride of ownership, an affordable bond budget, and reasonable equal consideration of the rural schools. So we haven't been really looking at that. I heard it tonight mentioned in, in some of it, that we were going to cover fixing certain things. But we need to have a number, and then if we do something, what is it going to cost to operate them? That's another thing I pointed out in this document. We have a staff that has accounting background. We could get that from them by experience as to what are these buildings going to cost when we start bringing on these more, bigger space. So in the document, I showed that there were, there were four basic options. They varied from fixing Eugene Field School and fixing a bunch of other things where it costs over the life of a bond, about 21 million. And then it goes to where the path that the board has been following, which is to follow the consultant's recommendations, which ends up about 49 million. Now, these are approximate numbers. I might be off about 5%, but I think I'm probably going to be low because the bond usually will cost more. I just did a straight analysis of percentage. So these are significant things, and I think that we should be looking at, can we fix Eugene Field School? And then maybe later on, sell it to somebody after it's been fixed, because we won't have a problem in selling it, because it will have the advantage of the improvements in it that help the problem with the change in occupancy. So you get probably recruit most of that money. So to the audience, I want to extend to you some topics that were expressed in the communication I gave to the principal of Eugene Field School.
Jean, Jean, could you just please address the board?
All right, I will.
Okay. I mean, the audience can hear, just.
Well, this is something that matters to all of us.
I understand that.
Okay, so in the, in the bond that was presented a year ago, the 46.9 million, we're heading into that same path right now. It would, the public said, "No, if we followed what was read by Wally during the meeting tonight, we're going to be spending almost the same kind of money." We need to pay attention to what we're doing. In Eugene Field School, and when I looked at it, someone in this group said, "You need to compromise." And I want you to know clearly that in compromising, last time that Save Old Schools went in action, it said something could be done for more like 6 million. That was a tight number. The number in there for Eugene Field School is now about $3.5 million more. It's comprehensive, it's covering everything. In fact, the number that I used in the spreadsheet that you received on Friday is a number that's a 6.5 million to remediate and to add on to Eugene Field School. That being done, we have a building that would be like new building, the, we could buy the property that's on B Street. We could put a parking lot there, we can, we can use the grass field. We can use the grass field for the students. We need to look at it that way. We have the opportunity to do something, to say something, and if we find that it doesn't do the opportunity that we needed just now, but it's the only thing we can do, we need to take a look at that. It will not be something that's full of spores or that has all this mold. That's not the case in the building anyway. It's not a wood structure that has mold problems. It's a concrete structure with interior walls. We don't have that water problem to create the spore problem. So I, I beg you to consider this, and I would appreciate if you would reciprocate, that you would talk to me about, "How did you figure this?" Because it's a complete budget. I took very seriously what I was doing this time and covered all the bases, and of course, talk, construction, review, and said it would work. And I've added 500,000 to that. So I appreciate if you would please pay attention to what I presented. Now, if you want to surprise, we have any questions?
I do have a question for you, Jean. You said that, that we're following the consultant's recommendations, and I guess I want to know where that, where that thought comes from.
Yeah, well, the consultant's recommendations are to do basically what Wally read, and they're saying that to not, to work with Eugene Field School. You have the numbers from the recent consultants that say to remediate Eugene Field School that it costs quite $11 million. Well, they've got a huge number in there for their own soft costs, which is, to me, improper. But the fact is, it can be done for far less. The method of fixing is entirely different than what they're doing. They went into the building in certain areas, put concrete block to make the shear of the building work, whereas there's a whole bunch of the building that's exposed, all the members of the public and to the children. In the method that I use, I put a complete veneer structure all the way around in a step frame with plywood, 3/4-inch plywood on it. So it protects the occupants, it provides a very excellent mass of space for R3 insulation, and it provides ventilation, and not just be in the attic and the foundation, but it lets foundation, or ventilation work through the wall system, so that the whole building is an envelope of air moving and venting out the room.
Right.
So we have absolutely different system that you wouldn't even see in most modern buildings.
Well, I appreciate you said the clarification there, because with, the way I've, the way I've received our consultant's input, I wouldn't call it recommendations, because what we've done primarily is sent consultants out to do review and to give us back some pricing and some costs and some scope and things like that. I don't believe that they've given us any recommendations about what to do. So I think that's different now. So I just, I would just make that point. We've received information. I think what you're doing is you're challenging the validity of the information we've received.
Well, no, and actually, if you follow what Wally said tonight, that should be done, he put off through a list of different things that should be done. You actually have it in the spreadsheet, it's on an eight-and-a-half by 14 feet, and there's four different methods to do it, and that's one of them.
Well, those, those were, those were questions that we put out to them and asked for input back. Those weren't things that were produced and given to us as recommendations. Those were scenarios that we developed and we sent out and said, "Give us some feedback."
What do you think?
And what Wally said tonight, and I know it's, like Julie said, it gets read and it's hard to process here, but he's saying to develop scope and costs. That's his, that's his proposal, develop scope and costs for these things. And, and that's a first step, maybe towards doing them, but it also potentially is a step towards saying, "Wow, we didn't realize that cost was going to be, you know, X, Y, or Z." So again, it's looking for information on scope and cost, not recommendations about what to do. I see that as the difference.
Yeah, once we understand it more, maybe some of these things will fall off, maybe we'll add, I don't know. But we don't have, we don't, we need more detail than what we have today.
Well, still, the factor of age, if we talked to my close at school before, we know, I sat in the audience tonight, in line items on what was discussed with what Wally said, and it added up to about $32 million. If you take that $32 million, add 6% to it for bond cost, and then project it over a period of 20 years, you're going to see it begin a huge number. So that's all I'm saying. If you, we can discuss whether it was came from the consultants, it came from you, but the case still is, what is something tangible that the electorate will vote on, and it will solve the problem here? And though everybody's emotionally excited about, "We want to fix the health problem," I think we should, as somebody mentioned, we should find out why that's happening. I haven't seen anything in the report that said why it's happening. I hear people talking about it. But where, where is the real issue? What is causing it? Is it dust? What is it?
Right. Well, Jean, that's one, one thing, you talk about a tangible, you know, dollar amount. That's what, that's what this board is after. You know, and we're not going to be putting that $32 million bond out there. We're at.
We're at, we think we can get, get out of Eugene Field for a reasonable amount and a reasonable bond and that's what this board is after, so. So, thank you for your comments.
You have to change your scope and attempt to accommodate.
Okay, well, Wilson, that's what we're working on. I'm curious how you can come up with a, a cost estimate sitting out on the chair out there.
That's what I've been trying to do all my life, Wally. I know you and a lot of other people, I do it myself.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Well, one thing I wanna say for the audience too is, I, just so there's no confusion here is, 'cause it's been said to me before, that maybe you're just rejecting Gene's proposal out of hand and I, I very much believe that that school can be remediated. I think, I think Tom has hit on this in our board work sessions too, and I don't think that there's anybody here that disagrees that it could be done. I think that, you know, for, speaking for myself, is that I think the numbers are gonna be higher than, than, than what you proposed, but I also think that it's not the best place to make our investment for the next, you know, a hundred years. And so, really, that, that for me is the most significant thing. You know, even if, even if your numbers would prove out to be correct, I've set that aside, I still don't think that's the best place to make that investment, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that too.
The thing is, as the wheel turns, the very optic, or one solution we're talking about using, which is modulars, is what the committee met on nineteen ninety-three that I was the chairman of, and we said, "We don't wanna do this with modulars because it's a poor investment. We need to consider, do we need a new school? What can we do that's going to be practical and get this done?" Whereas the new school was recommended, we didn't know it was gonna cost that amount or especially the second page, but we wanted to avoid a poor investment module. So, I hate to see you get right back to that same point that started in nineteen ninety-three.
Okay. Thanks, Gene.
We would too.
Anyone else, would anyone else like to address the board tonight? I'll go here in a minute. Go ahead.
I had to think about this carefully and not be impulsive. I'm...
Could you introduce yourself?
I am Lori Creamer and I work at Eugene Field. I teach first grade, I've been there for twelve-plus years. I've been in the district for twenty-seven years. I worked in the building for approximately eight years. I have been in a modular for at least the last three or four years and if it meant my job, I'd have to retire tomorrow because there's no way I would go back in that building. I am safe in my modular, I have good air to breathe and my students are safe and that to me is what is most important and that's what we're talking about tonight, the safety of our students and doing what's right for our kids. And keeping them in that building is not right for them. People get sick in that building, I have no idea where it comes from, but they get sick. I've been sick in that building. I have been much healthier since I moved out. And it's gonna be a sad day when, God forbid, you know, the earthquake hits and we lose five hundred kids in that building. A hundred percent coming down on us? I've never heard that number before tonight and it really scares me. And it makes me angry, sorry.
That's fine.
That's all I have to say. We need to do what's right for our kids and getting them out of that building is what's right for our kids. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Okay, over here.
I'm Jose de la Rosa. I live on three forty-three Mill Street. Okay, listening to all of this for a little while, you know, I have a few questions and a couple of ideas that I came up on my own and listening to you guys debating about what the recommendation says, we just have to focus on Eugene Field, but if you guys are gonna close Eugene Field, that not just, that is not just Eugene Field because you have to think about the other schools that are around because you need to reach off of these kids somehow. And looking to certain documents I have seen, I think that the district has a very good idea about how they wanna rearrange all of these kids and I think it's a very good idea to take that high school and convert it into a middle school. Because since I moved in this town about eight years ago, every two years, I mean, there's a bond going on. And I get the side effects of that because I, I have to pay for that too, so it would be nice if you guys use your best knowledge and put it to work and perhaps do what is right to move the kids from Eugene Fields to a better building. I don't, I, I still don't, can't understand why Schleter Campus, old brick structures still there after they passed the bond for the high school. I mean, that's, if that was dangerous, that should have been removed long time ago and now if this is the right opportunity to do that and get a better school there, I think that'll be the right thing to do. Now, oof, got lost in all of this. Anyways, I think you guys should have to think about the whole Silverton down, I mean, the city schools like Mike Twain, Robert Frost, Schleter Campus and trying to combine them the best way possible because there's a bond going on already that pretty much we paying for it. And if you guys bring up another bond and don't do the right thing, that means in a few years, there's gonna be another bond. And this could become a game that we don't really wanna play, it's better just to get it all done one time, get it all right. And I mean, if it takes five minutes more or five minutes less, it's better to do it right, right from the beginning instead of trying to going back and forth with these bonds. I'd rather just know, well, for the next twenty years, I wanna be paying this much for school than say, "Well, I'm gonna pay this much for the next ten years and then ten years from now, we're gonna have to do another bond because whatever we did on two thousand fourteen wasn't right," you know? So, I just encourage you guys to use your best knowledge to rearrange this elementary school and middle school the best way possible. And it's a four schools that you have to think about, not only Eugene Field because it's four schools right here that you can use. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Greg Sheasley, I live at seven thirty-two South Water.
I just wanna thank you for all the information that you've given us this evening and, and the very civil way that the community and the board has worked together, including the staff. I wanna thank you sincerely for that and we got a lot of good information. I think what we're looking at is a very complex issue and there's no easy answer. And unfortunately, you, eight, seven, are tasked with almost a superhuman undertaking right now. You know that people are struggling, you know the economy is coming back, but it isn't coming back robustly, I don't think. We're looking at a lot of options, we have a lot of needs and we're trying to look at the most cost-effective and long-term reasonable and common sense solutions to this problem. And I hope that we can all keep a civil discourse going, we're moving in the right direction. I'm particularly impressed with the effort that the board and the school district has made to reach out to Silverton. You're very transparent, you're very active, you give us ample dates and times and meetings. However, I'm seeing a little bit of something emerging that bothers me and that is, I feel like at this point, when still debating all these needs, we're letting the idea of the closure rushing us to judgment. I think it has, you know, most people feel emotionally a little bit committed to this now and so it has reached a point where we would like to see some effort or at least a target date moving forward. But Mr. Beeson took a tack tonight that I thought had some merit and that was, we need to get a little more of our ducks in a row and keep that transparency and keep that two-way communication going like you have been doing, which is admirable. God bless ya. But I think at this point, we should not come up with a target date until we have some of the scope. Perhaps that's what you're trying to achieve, but I'm just saying from an untutored public seat, my eyes see that possibly we have a rush to judgment and maybe we need a little bit more, something that the community could look over because as you know, we're not all donkeys. I mean, many of us can make very good decisions, but we need information and a lot of information is yet coming forward. And I know it's difficult because nobody can look into the future, nobody can see, nobody has a clear seeing glass on this thing. But if we keep some idea of, the thing is ninety-four years old and the earthquake hasn't happened, so we can either be ruled by fear or we can be ruled by faith. Let's have the faith that we still have a little bit of time to make the right decision. And I, I admire your undertaking and thank you for your commitment. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Anyone else? Mr. Mannion?
Yes, I just wanna be very brief here. Appreciate your efforts and I've said that all along. I've, I think there's been a lot of good headway made this evening. The one theme there, just, you know, our last speaker I thought was very eloquent and I agree with a lot of what he said, but the one issue I have is that this has been talked about since nineteen ninety-three or much before I got here and the can's been kicked down the road over and over and over again. And I think that, you know, we could continue talking about this for five more years and there'd still be a little division about what direction it should go. I urge you though, to please adopt that action plan. There's, we need to have a sense of urgency. I respect Mr. Beeson and his, and his knowledge and his longevity in the school board and I appreciate all that, but I also know that it's, it's May twelfth. So, six months from now is, the November election's gone. So, and then the can would be kicked and kicked again. And in the meantime, you know, I don't think we're worried about an earthquake, I mean, we are, but it's just the lack of a quality school that happens. Tomorrow morning, my wife's gonna pull into the parking lot and they're gonna go into a dilapidated school. And so, I think this action plan would get us in that direction, it would get you the information that you need or at least get you in that, to where we can get something moving here in November. And if at that point, the voters don't want it, there you go. But I'd like to think that this community is better than that, I'd like to think that they would step up and see the need and go with it. So, again, thank you for your time and I urge you to get that moving so we can have some concrete information or you can at least to kinda put something forward because I also think, you know, confusion and not enough, you know, I think we need to have some clarity and I think that starts with getting some concrete information. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
So, if I could just comment, it isn't the board of directors here that since the nineteen sixties or seventies has kicked the can down the road with respect to Eugene Field, it's the voters. The voters haven't approved the funds to close the school and do something else. So, we're doing our best to see if we can make that case. We'll probably adopt, I think, almost certainly, the recommendations of the task force this evening, but once again, those recommendations may go by the wayside when we hit the hard reality of no money. So, that's my comment.
Anyone else like to address the board? Okay, moving on, we have a couple of action items. First one, adopt the Eugene Field Facilities Task Force Recommendations. Is there a motion?
So, move.
I was gonna suggest, if you wanna withdraw your motion for a moment.
Just a little short time.
I was gonna suggest that we move to adopt them amended with an additional amendment to remove the word "only" from...
The funding base first bullet.
Yeah, we have it right here in front of me, it's mixed up, but. I guess I could just ask Irv if he would amend his motion to...
I would amend that to adopt your motion.
Okay.
Was that a second?
Go ahead.
So, I will second, yes. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the Eugene Field Task Force Recommendations as previously amended and as amended this evening by removing the word "only" from the first bullet under the funding based section. Is that correct?
Well said, yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Wally, did you wanna...
Yeah, I wanna make a, it's a second motion to give the district direction, develop scope and costs in preparation for a potential bond targeted for the November election and include the following: removal of the old three-story section of Schleter Street Campus, removal of the old Ag Science Building, remodel and upgrade the remaining single-story structures on the Schleter Street Campus, infill Schleter Street Campus with new construction to provide new educational space, provide safety and security upgrades at all the district school buildings that are used for students per our consultant's reports, and to provide technology upgrades in our buildings.
Second?
Who's the second?
It's moved and seconded for Wally's motion, which I can't repeat that one. Any discussion on this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Julian.
I'm not knowing what kind of facility we're putting in there, whether it's a, you know, a grade school or middle school, I think that's hard to figure out what the remodeling focus is going to be that...
Well, Julian just says, it just says, "Infill the Schleter Street Campus with new construction to provide new educational space."
I think, what I'm hoping to get some generic costs and generic scope so we can start making some decisions. We've been talking a long time about this and it's, it's time to get some more detailed information so we really know what we're talking about.
I agree, I also think there should be more focus than even that, in that we should have made a few more decisions before going forward. I don't know, this seems like a, not spur of the moment, we've been talking about it for a long time, but at the same time, you know, we haven't really, I feel like it came to this today and it's like, "Okay, let's put this on the agenda" and I have a problem with that.
Yeah, I'd like some time to ponder it too and add or remove or add details to it. I think it's great, it's time for the rubber to hit the road and throw numbers to this. And like, you know...
Part of my concern is what John mentioned, it's, it's May twelfth and clock's ticking, we've been talking, we've been talking, we've been talking, it's time to do something.
Yeah, and I, I agree, Tom, it's time for the rubber to hit the road and it's time to move forward with this. And I think, I think Wally's recommendations do that. They give us some specific, some specific guidelines without saying, you know, I'm not ready, personally, I'm not ready to make a decision yet on what to do with the Schleter property, whether we put a K3 there or a junior high. I'm not ready to do that, I would like to see more figures for, you know, regarding volumetric or construction, but at least this says, "We're using the Schleter Campus for one of, for, for educational purposes, we're gonna redo it." I think it just gets us moving in the right direction. It says that we're gonna tear down the old, old section of Schleter. I think it's just a little more specific on things we've been talking about for the last few months anyway.
Wally, I had, are you done, Tim?
Yeah.
I, under bullet number two, you've got, "Remove old Ag Science Building." Does that include the auto shop?
No, it does not. But we could, okay, including it if we needed to. I don't think that's been in the part of the scope we've been talking about.
Well, it's been in part of the scope.
It, it was considered at one point, but in, in all of the concepts that were considered last May, that the old auto shop would have remained.
I think it's heavily used with, with our maintenance folks.
It is, it's extensively used by the groundskeeping and maintenance department at this point.
I would say then, remove...
I would say then, remove old buildings as necessary, because what if we, based on the design, we need to remove them, then what we got to do?
Well, I think we could add to this, we could add to this, you know, at any future point.
I agree. The intention is to be very specific, to look at specific scope, we can go price out and understand the scope for it. In any scenario we've talked about, we've been talking about these aspects.
So can I chime in?
Yes.
Have you guys finished? I think this conversation that we're having right now illustrates why it would be really good for this board to have a conversation about this and discuss it and work it out before we vote on it. It's been brought to us by one member this evening, and obviously, others have questions, and there are probably questions that we haven't even thought about yet. We have a board work session in one week.
Would you be in favor of putting it on as an action item? I mean, usually we don't do that at our board work sessions, but to make a decision on it then, as well as discuss it, or are you thinking about bringing it to another?
I think once we get into it, we'll know what we want to do. I mean, if we decide that we want to do that, we decide, I think that it's a great idea, but I think we need to flesh it out, and I think that everyone here on this board needs to have ownership and understanding of what it is we're requesting.
I think it's fine to wait a week, I don't want to wait any longer. So if, I think if we're okay.
Would you be willing to withdraw your motion with the caveat that we are going, it will be an action item at our work session?
I'd be willing to do that.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
I'm good. Yeah.
It will be, it will be an action item next week. And Wally, maybe you could send that around in email form to everybody?
Sure.
Just so we have it.
We do it tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other business, we're going to move out of regular session, go into executive session under ORS 192660. Conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Thank you for coming.